Good evening. Josh Wiskow, Ward 1. Hi to Aria and Jasmine, watching at home. Thank you, as always, to all of you for your service. I’m here to talk about a road safety concept known as Vision Zero, as in zero deaths. Since my comments are somewhat relevant to the capital improvement program, but that’s not the reason I’m here, let me thank the staff who are involved in it for their good work on the CIP and the numerous plans that inform it. Most of you know of my involvement in various advisory bodies on land use and transportation, as well as the Budget Committee, but I’m not here in any of those capacities. Tonight, I’m here as a person who walks in bikes and especially, I’m here as a parent. I’d like to connect a recent event to our policies and priorities and expenditures and offer thoughts about what we might do in response. As perhaps everyone here now knows, on February 22nd, three children died tragically on Main Street in Springfield. They and their mother were hit by a truck while crossing in a crosswalk. John McKenzie and Tyler were eight, five, and four. My daughters are eight and five. I have crossed many of our streets on foot and on bike with them. So I have asked myself, what can we learn from this event? First of all, to call it an accident, as we typically label it, is not quite right. In the words of BPAC member and UVO planning professor Mark Schlossberg, “This collision is not an accident or a one-off occurrence. It is a fatal collision created by the explicit design of the infrastructure.” Those are shocking words, but I’m not here to shock. I’m here, actually, to inspire, specifically to inspire all of us to support and plan and fund the design of less dangerous streets and a less dangerous transportation system. There are many lessons here, but I’ll pick out one. I suggest that council request staff to examine Vision Zero, an international movement to influence street design to protect pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists. As reported recently in Portland, Vision Zero, as in zero deaths on the street, is an attempt to change our approach to design and policy for streets so that no one is hurt or killed while using them. This movement started in Scandinavia, but it has spread to municipalities in Europe and North America. Seattle has an excellent Vision Zero plan. Portland recently made a series of commitments based on Vision Zero. Since these are about the design of individual streets and crossings, they are relevant virtually everywhere. In the words of its creators, “It is based on the simple fact that we are humans and make mistakes. The road system needs to keep us moving, but it also must be designed to protect us at every turn.” Now, I understand transportation spending is tricky with funds and grants and project lists, and it involves tough choices, but I hope you will advise staff to advise you on the viability of Vision Zero as a city policy and to look back at the CIP and other plans to tip the balance, this year or beyond, toward high priority and shovel-ready projects that make our streets safer for everyone. Let’s also keep these tragic deaths in mind with a broader context, any prioritization we do under future bond measures for street repair and the implementation of our ongoing gas tax proceeds. I appreciate the example of this in South Eugene, on South Willamette, but I think everyone should have streets that safe. Thank you.
You. Sue Walling is next, followed by Tom Mulhern.
Hi, I’m Sue Walling. I live at 108 High Street in Claire Saretz Ward. I’m sure you all saw the article in yesterday’s Register Guard explaining the home builder’s concerns about the proposed lack of urban growth boundary expansion for single-family housing. I’m glad to hear that home builders are concerned about housing affordability. I share their concern about housing affordability. But let’s be clear, expanding the urban growth boundary into the sites that were planned will do nothing to address affordability. The sites that were planned near Gimble Hill and Bloomberg are very expensive to develop, very expensive to serve, and would be on very large lots. They will not do a thing to make housing in Eugene more affordable. We have spent a long time and many, many hours on Invision Eugene. It’s been years in the development, thousands of hours of citizens’ and staff time in coming up with these recommendations. Surely, you don’t want to throw that all out just because the results make some people uncomfortable. That would be a major breach of trust with the community. I think the best way to deal with the home builder’s concern would be to look at Pillar Seven. That’s the one that talks about monitoring the implementation of Invision Eugene and flexibly adjusting it if needed. If it’s really true that there’s a shortage of single-family housing sites, that would become apparent, and we could deal with it. On the other hand, it might be that the increase in multifamily developments we’ve seen in the past few years isn’t just a flash in the pan. Maybe it’s a real thing that’s going to last for a while. I know of two demographic groups that are possibly much more interested in multifamily housing in the future. Some of them are the young millennials who seem to like to live in urban areas and like to use Uber, for instance, as you’ve heard about. Another group is the aging baby boomers, who are just finding that mowing the lawn, cleaning the gutters just doesn’t have the charm that it used to. Any of these people might suddenly decide that single-family housing just isn’t what it’s cracked up to be. So if these trends, whether for more single-family housing or less, prove to be true, we can deal with it through Pillar Seven, and that’s the best way to address the home builder’s concerns. Thanks.
Thank you. Tom Mulhern is next, followed by, I’m sorry I can’t read it, it’s Doug, and he lives on Spyglass.
Thank you. I’m Tom Mulhern, Executive Director of Catholic Community Services of Lane County. I live on Bond Lane, and our service center is on West Sixth Avenue. I’m here tonight to say thank you for your ongoing commitment to the work supported by the Lane County Human Services Commission. We’re one of several nonprofit organizations that work with you and the Human Services Commission to help our neighbors in need. We do this through a variety of programs and services, including one that you may not know about. As you know, the Egan Warming Centers provide temporary shelter in cold weather to homeless individuals and couples. Well, the Egan Centers have never been able to accommodate homeless families with children because you can’t have children at the places with some of the people who are being housed in the Egan Centers. So this year, the Human Services Commission allocated some funding to Catholic Community Services to provide temporary motel shelter for homeless families with children on cold nights. We’ve had a pretty mild winter, so we haven’t had as much of a demand for that. But last week, when we had a couple of nights where it got down below freezing, we were able to put eight homeless families with children in temporary motel shelter. One of those families was a single mom who was temporarily living in a vehicle with her own mom, who’s in her 80s, and five children. Now, we didn’t change their life by putting them up in a motel for a few nights, but I can assure you, they were extremely grateful to have a warm place to stay on those cold nights. That’s just one quick example of the kinds of things that go on every day with the support of the Human Services Commission and the various municipalities, both those kinds of short-term assistances, as well as the long-term projects that really help people move out of poverty. So thank you for your ongoing commitment to that kind of work.
Thank you. Doug, you’re up, followed by Kristin Brandt.
Sorry about the handwriting. My name’s Doug Gubrud. I live at 695 Spyglass, and I’m Mike’s Ward, I don’t know what one it is. But specifically, I own a business down at Third and Lincoln, but it happens to also sit right on a railroad crossing. I understand council had a work session today, and this was a topic that was spoken of seven and a half years ago, and I thought it had gone away to some extent, but apparently it’s resurfacing again. My concern then was that they were going to close five out of 10 crossings through the city, which I thought seemed to be fairly significant and would really bar traffic from flowing through. Now, it appears that maybe two out of the 10 will be closed, and mine may be at Third and Lincoln be considered to be closed. And so I guess my concern is, although, you know, for reasons as you can imagine, it will impact my business, I also want council to consider if they’re going to, in fact, have a railroad crossing zone program developed, that they raise appropriate funding to deal with all 10 crossings equally, with these supplemental safety measures that are required for those areas, and that the funding be for all, and keep the 10 crossings open for all the vehicle and pedestrian and bicycle traffic so that we can try to keep this city vital and ongoing through its growth. And I just am concerned that the crossing closures would impact our city overall, not just me. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin Brandt is next, followed by Jerry Parrish.
My name is Kristin Brandt, and I’m lucky to live in the West Jefferson neighborhood. I’m here tonight to tell you about our unsanctioned rest stop called Occupy the Human Right to Sleep, or Ours. In the tradition of the Sleeps campaign for the last several years, a core group of 10 to 15 people have worked to make a safe, clean, and quiet protest camp. We are making the point publicly that being poor and without permanent shelter is not a crime and should immediately cease to be considered one. The Ours camp has moved to at least 17 different locations in the last seven months, helping each other as a community to get through the winter. A total of at least eight people have found shelter or have gotten into some of the other sanctioned rest stops during that time, and we feel really fortunate that we’ve been able to shelter them while they were waiting for that opportunity. The Ours camp has provided community and support for some vulnerable citizens of Eugene this winter, and will continue working through the summer on various activities to address the criminalization of poor people and unhoused people who are living in Eugene regardless of attempts to exclude them. The Ours protest camp has also made many friends along the way in the neighborhoods we have moved to. At every location, we picked up all the garbage that others had left and showed the community that we are good neighbors. Many, many citizens in Eugene have stopped by our camps and showed their support in a variety of ways. Please lift or amend the camping ban, stop criminalizing people’s existence, and help us, help make the community a wonderful place to be for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Parrish is up next, followed by Lori Swanson-Gribskoff.
I’m living at the camp that she just talked about.
Would you introduce yourself, Jerry?
I’m Jerry Parrish. Yeah, I’m homeless. I’m 66-years-old. I live at that very camp that she’s talking about. I have a question for you. Can I ask a question? No, no question?
The way it works is, in the course of your conversation, you can ask a question if a council or I choose to answer it when we’re all done.
Okay. That’s all I have, is one question for you all tonight. Is homelessness a crime in Eugene?
Thank you. Lori Swanson-Gribskoff is next, followed by Ken Kato.
Good evening. I’m Lori Swanson-Gribskoff. I live in Allen Zelenka’s Ward, right next to Washburn Park, and I’m here this evening on behalf of the Washburn neighbors. So many of us are here. Would you stand, please? And you notice we made those signs, Washburn Park, so you can identify us. Three of us are going to speak. I’ll give you a brief overview of the problems we’ve been experiencing in Washburn Park with pot smoking. Then Samantha Bronner will talk about her experience with her children, and then, actually, Ken Kato was going to do a wrap-up on the last steps, if it might be possible to put it in that order. Might that be possible? So first off, we want to thank the council and the City of Eugene and the University of Oregon for taking us seriously that we had a brewing problem, if you will, with pot smoking across the street. We have had over 100 incidents and 21 citations, and quite frankly, the overwhelming majority, like 95-plus percent, are university students. University students can’t smoke in the dorms. That means can’t smoke pot. Smoking pot is not legal yet in our state, but will be July 1st. So we saw, uh-oh, we have a big problem coming up. We were having clusters of folks gravitating and smoking pot, kind of scaring other people away. And I think this is something we’re going to be facing as a community and see that this might be a prototype approach. We partnered with the police department, the neighborhood liaison, the parks and open spaces folks to come and talk with us. Councilor Zelenka came to my home and met with us. At the University of Oregon, we’ve had representatives from housing, student conduct, restorative justice, and government and community relations, because this isn’t just my problem, our neighbor’s problem, it’s all of our problem and something that we appreciate dealing with proactively. So Sam will give you a bit of an insight of how much of a problem we’ve had, what it felt like. I will say it’s getting better, and we need to continue the next step, particularly with parks and open spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Samantha Bronner, followed by Ken Kato.
My name is Samantha Bronner, and I live at 1953 Columbia Street, kind of catty-corner across the street from Washburn Park. Councilor Zelenka is our representative. Thank you all for your service. I moved here about six years ago with my two daughters, who are now 10 and 12, and it didn’t take long to figure out that the smell of a warm summer day in Washburn Park was the smell of marijuana. I will say that it didn’t overly concern me because people tended to be very discreet about it, and there were other activities happening at the same time, people throwing frisbees, laying out in the sun, listening to music, reading books, doing slack lines. And so we tolerated it. That all changed for me this past fall, and what I noticed was that when I would walk across the park to go get my kids from school, there would be groups of people already smoking pot at 2:30 in the afternoon. And they weren’t just smoking, it was clear they were smoking pot, they were passing large bongs around, and you could actually watch it happen as you drive down Aggett. I’ve witnessed it. And so it kind of happened, and I was concerned with it, so I started approaching them as I would walk through and say, “I’m going to school to pick up my kids, and I’m going to be coming back in 10 minutes. You guys need to put your bongs away.” And they would. But I thought that there wouldn’t just be that short-term, you know, effect, that there would be a longer-term effect, that they would realize, oh, whoa, this is like a family neighborhood, and maybe we shouldn’t be doing this here. But that didn’t happen. It got worse and worse and worse, to the point that by the end of November, when it was rainy outside, the only people in Washburn Park were pot smokers, dog walkers, and me and my kids. And I had said to myself, I am going to continue walking through this park, because if I don’t, then we will have given it up. So, but by the time December rolled around, I was angry every time I would walk through the park. So we got together, a group of us, to try to address the problem, and what I heard from my neighbors wasn’t the same as, they didn’t have the same experiences that I did, but we were all being impacted by what was happening in the park. Here are the things that people say they experienced. There was trash in the park. There’s vandalism. The benches that are beautifully carved have been painted on, as have some of the trees in Washburn Park recently. It’s loud at night. There are basically parties going on in the park after hours because it’s really dark back there, and you can’t see what’s happening. Sometimes people were setting off firecrackers in the middle of the night. When the police actually started going there, they would find groups of 20 or 30 people at a time smoking dope. And they could stand in the midst of these people and not even be seen because it was so dark, and watch it all happen for a few minutes before they finally shone their light on themselves. People felt like when they were sitting on their parks, they could smell the smell of pot. I know whenever I would be raking my leaves, I would smell it. One neighbor, they wouldn’t open their windows.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Kato is next, followed by Robin Bloomgarden.
Good evening. My name is Ken Kato, 2060 Agga Street in Councilor Zelenka’s Ward, and I’m following Lori and Sam, so I won’t repeat what they’ve said, other than to add my two cents that it’s true, we saw a really dramatic change in the nature of Washburn Park, a really fantastic place, and I won’t go over those again. And I’ll pick up what Lori was saying in terms of the thanks. It was a really fantastic experience to work with the city, in particular EPD, the university, the Office of Housing, Community Relations, Conduct and Restorative Justice Program. It’s been a real success. We’ve seen a major, major change, and so we say thank you to the city. In particular, in our discussions with EPD, as Lori pointed out, we see this not only as our own local issue, but also it’s a bit of a test case for what we’ll see maybe this summer. And out of some of those very fruitful discussions with the Eugene Police Department, really thinking about, we had a lot of success. We’re thinking about the future, what comes next, and how do we maintain the success that we had, we’ve got one specific ask. What we’re requesting of the Eugene Police Department is to conduct a formal Crime Prevention through Environmental Design, or SEPTED, analysis and report for Washburn Park. SEPTED is a multidisciplinary approach for deterring criminal behavior through environmental design. SEPTED strategies rely upon the ability to influence offender decisions that precede criminal acts, specifically altering the physical design of a place in order to deter the criminal activity. It’s the main goal of SEPTED. In our view, there’s some real opportunities to basically put more eyes on the park, to help sustain and maintain the success we’ve had and kind of keep it going to the future. Knowing full well that some of what we may see from that may not be budgetarily feasible on every item, but we feel receiving that kind of analysis and report from EPD, if they’re amenable, gives us a real firm foundation and basically a roadmap for the future to think about what we do next. And that’s it. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin Bloomgarden is next, followed by John Dotson.
I’m an advocate for carbon taxes for Oregon.
Would you introduce yourself, Rob?
Oh, yeah. I’m Robin Bloomgarden. I live in Claire’s district. I’m an advocate for carbon taxes. Is this echoing to you or just me?
Probably more to you.
Wow, okay. I’m here once again to let you know that I feel it’s very important that you pass the Eugene Sustainability Commission’s resolution calling on the Oregon State Legislature to craft legislation carefully to impose a carbon tax or fee relying on modeling described in the NERC report and the experience of British Columbia, with special attention to mitigating impacts on low-income Oregonians. I thought you all had seen the resolution.
Just back up a little from it.
Is it?
Yeah, better.
Okay, sorry. It was hard for me, too. I thought you all had seen the resolution since I was here two weeks ago to speak, but was informed by Claire today that you have not seen it. I hope that the timely nature of this request will spur you on to pass it as soon as you do see it. There are no budget monies involved in passing this resolution, just a willingness on all of your parts. A carbon tax can make a significant contribution to Oregon’s overall greenhouse gas emissions reductions goals, and the impact of a carbon tax policy would have relatively small impacts on the whole state’s economy. I repeat, this resolution will give us a tool to advocate with at the state and local level for policies that will help mitigate climate change. The sooner the better. Thank you.
Thank you. So the best advice I can give you all when you come up, because everybody’s voice is different, if you’re not loud enough, bring it up closer, or put it down or away from me if you feel like you’re getting too much bounce, so maybe get your comfort zone. John?
Good day. John Dotson, North Eugene. I want to go back a little history here. The Lane County Boundary Commission was established through vote by the state legislature and provided oversight over issues within Lane County. The board members were appointed by the governor of the state of Oregon. The City of Eugene decided to modify applications for annexation into the city by applying streets and rights-of-ways to the applicant’s request. The elector requesting annexation then was agreed to enter into an agreement with the city to keep those on his application or hers. The elector went through public meeting process and was guided by the city council and El Cog. When presented to the Boundary Commission in public for approval of the annex, Jim Seaberry, myself, and Dave Van Sickleall presented a protest and requested those streets be dropped off the applications. We said that, look, there is no standing currently for electors over streets and rights-of-ways. The El Cog representative was asked by the Boundary Commission, can the application be split, the property to be annexed and the streets or rights-of-ways to be annexed, be voted on separately? Paula Taylor stated, no. The application is not separable. The elector had to vote on the application yes to annex or no not to annex. The elector just voted over streets and rights-of-ways and over property. The Boundary Commission approved the annexation, and here we are today. There were four annexations approved by the Boundary Commission, combined with property and streets and rights-of-ways. Each time, we submitted petitions to have a vote on the inclusion of streets and rights-of-ways, only to be told that no one lives in the streets and rights-of-ways, and therefore, the landowners along the same streets and rights-of-ways on the application have no standing. The annexations, and I have them listed here. Now, since 2006, the streets and rights-of-ways still reside within the City of Eugene and the properties. I spent time trying to resolve how the elector of a piece of property could get control and have electoral status over streets and rights-of-ways while his neighbors did not have any. I found the answer. It’s called the principal act. Yes, I believe the Boundary Commission ruled in favor of the City of Eugene on inclusion of streets and rights-of-ways where that power had never existed, the Boundary Commission having direct power confirmed from the state legislature exercised.
Thank you.
I’ll leave a copy.
Appreciate that. Wayne Martin is next, followed by Eric Burke.
Madam Mayor, councilors, Mr. City Manager. My name is Wayne Martin. I live at 1223 Washington Street. My counselor is George Brown. I’m a retired clergyman, and I care about the crisis of housing and the people most affected by that crisis, the homeless. There are thousands of them sleeping illegally in Lane County tonight. I do what I do, although there are other interesting, competing ways I can spend my retired time. Because the mandate to help the poor is unmistakable in the sacred books of Judaism and Christianity, as well as the teachings of Buddhism and Hinduism, Taoism, Confucianism, and the teachings of native religions throughout time, I’ve tried to show persistence and patience in my endeavors. I’m beginning to feel encouraged by a number of things, and I want to speak to those. The year-long efforts of a group called Nightingale Health Sanctuary, on which I serve, the steering committee. We have found a location, and we are up and running with a homeless camp with an emphasis on people helping people, especially those with disabilities. And we’re grateful to many in this room right now, as well as the board and the staff of Lane County for your support. The efforts of the city manager and the business community to find solutions for housing for veterans, and especially to provide help to more and more homeless youth. Thank you. The efforts of the Eugene Police Department to provide a good liaison and a spokesperson and a very kind presence to people sleeping in unsanctioned camps and working with us. And finally, with the help of some business leaders in my church, I’ve met with some of their colleagues in the commercial real estate sector, along with Terry McDonald, who attended that. The conversation had promising signs, and two or three ideas have been offered and some groundwork is being laid. I can’t give those specifics yet, but I’m grateful and hopeful for the conversations and the open dialogue. It’s time that we in the advocacy community talk with business leaders, and they’re very receptive, and there’ll be more meetings. If there are business people with creativity and compassion who want to be a part of this discussion, please send me an email at waynechaplin@netzero.com, and you’ll be included. Thank you.
Next up is Eric Burke, followed by Megan Kempel.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I’m Eric Burke, the director of the Eugene chapter of Friends of Trees. I live at 1170 West 17th in Ward 1. I’m here for two reasons today. Friends of Trees has a strong partnership with City of Eugene around Urban Forestry and and I'd like the council to know more about the work we do and our partnership. The second reason is to speak to some of the benefits of urban forestry in Eugene. Urban trees have a great return on investment. Trees are green infrastructure and significantly reduce stormwater costs, for example. Trees have dozens of economic, ecological, and public health benefits. Friends of Trees is a nonprofit community building organization. We work in 20 cities in Oregon and Washington, including Springfield and Eugene. Our mission is to bring people together to plant and care for trees, city trees, in Oregon and Washington. I've left some more information for all of you in your Thursday packets. Friends of Trees is proud of our programs. We try very hard to make sure that all the trees we plant are wanted trees. They're the right tree in the right place to reduce conflicts with hardscape and utilities. We are also very proud of our well-documented 96% survival rate here in Eugene after the first growing season. Our programs are cost-effective, build citizen involvement and appreciation of urban forestry among the community, and are award-winning and nationally recognized. We have two primary programs. Our Neighborhood Tree Program focuses on street and yard trees, both planting and pruning trees with volunteers. Our Green Space Program organizes volunteers to plant and care for trees in parks, natural areas, and road sides. Couple recent examples, last Saturday, we planted in 60 volunteers, planted 33 street trees in west and south Eugene. And this Saturday, we'll be in Trainsong Neighborhood, supporting Trainsong neighbors, weeding and mulching and pruning trees that we all planted together in 2010 between the U.P. rail yard and the residential part of Trainsong Neighborhood. I'd like to give a big thanks to all the councilors and Mayor Piercy for your past support of urban forestry and for coming out to our events. I'd encourage all of you to join us at an upcoming event and see what it's like. Our contract with the City of Eugene has helped us leverage well over $300,000 in outside support for the work we do in the City of Eugene from individuals, businesses, and foundations. Many foundations have supported us, including Oregon Community Foundation, Meyer Memorial Trust, Union Pacific Foundation, J. Frank Schmidt Foundation, and many others. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Megan Kempel is next, followed by Caitlin Feeley.
Hi, I'm Megan Kempel. I live in Ward 7, and I've spoken before about the carbon tax resolution, and I just wanted to add a little update for you. I understand from Councilor Zelenka that you'll probably be seeing that resolution this week before your break. I'm really pleased to hear that and hope that shortly after your break, you'll be able to move it through the process of a hearing and a work session. I've been meeting with legislators in Salem for the past several months, and they are beginning the process of considering a carbon price for the state of Oregon. The sooner the City of Eugene passes a carbon tax or carbon pricing resolution, the sooner we can let them know that we, as a community, are supportive of putting a price on carbon. As we've been having those meetings with legislators in Salem and meeting with other advocates and nonprofit organizations here in Eugene and statewide, we are learning some new things about carbon pricing, and I want to ask, request, and just support a little change to the language. Right now, the language says that we call on the state of Oregon to pass a carbon tax, and Robin laid out some of the specific language. But I want to recommend that we might change the language to "pass a carbon pricing policy." We're learning that, even though I've been a very strong advocate for a carbon tax and I helped to draft the language that says "carbon tax," we're learning that there are some legal and public opinion issues with the carbon tax, and that a price on carbon is likely more legal, feasible, and effective as well. So, a couple of those really quickly are that any tax levied on transportation fuels in the state of Oregon must go to the Highway Fund, and no one wants a carbon tax to go to the Highway Fund. Public opinion polling is really showing a lot more support for cap and trade policy or cap and allocation policy over a carbon tax, and it's looking like if we were, any carbon pricing policy would likely be referred to the voters. So, it's really important that there's public support. There are a number of other issues that are coming up, and I just want to make a request that, as a co-author of that resolution, and I think you'll be hearing from the Sustainability Commission with a possible request and recommendation that the language be broadened to carbon pricing, just that I support that change. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Caitlin Feeley, followed by Jonathan Brandt.
I have other materials for you guys. Thank you very much. First of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Caitlin Feeley. I live at 841 West 11th Alley. I'm a student at the University of Oregon and also an intern with Environment Oregon, a statewide citizen-based environmental advocacy group that represents more than 40,000 members and supporters. I'm here today to urge you to support legislation at the state level that would bring 10 times more solar energy to Oregon by 2025. Oregon has been a leader in many environmental and clean energy issues, but when it comes to solar energy, we are seriously far behind. In fact, Oregon currently gets less than 1% of its energy from the sun, which is a lot further behind many other states in the nation, such as Massachusetts or New Jersey. But it's not because they get more sun than we do, it's because they have better policies in place that incentivize solar for home and business owners as well as large-scale developers. Solar benefit Oregon in a variety of ways. First, the solar industry in Oregon is already well-established and has room for growth. Oregon is one of the nation's leading centers for solar technology design and manufacturing. In fact, we are home to the nation's largest solar panel manufacturer, Solar World. We also have 133 solar organizations already here throughout the state, employing over 2,700 Oregonians. And additionally, because the panels are made in Oregon and installed by Oregonians, more than 80% of the money funneled into these projects stays in the state. Secondly, repowering Oregon with solar power is important to reduce our contribution to climate change. If we got 10% of our energy from the sun, we'd prevent 3.8 million metric tons of carbon pollution by the year 2025, which is the equivalent of taking 730,000 cars off the road. If we want to get serious about reducing our dependence on dirty, dangerous fuel sources, we need to turn to alternative forms of energy, such as solar. Luckily, we have a fantastic opportunity to do just that in this legislative session. There are four bills that are coming up that would get us to our goal of 10% by 2025. We have House Bill 2745 extending the residential energy tax credit, offering up to $6,000 for homeowners to install solar panels. We have House Bill 2632, which creates incentive for large-scale solar. We have House Bill 2745, which extends and improves Oregon's current solar pilot program, which pays consumers for their excess energy that they generated using solar panels. And then finally, we have House Bill 2941, modeled after a successful program in Colorado, where individuals and businesses who can install solar on their own properties are able to buy solar panels or a series of solar panels on an off-site location and still reap all the same benefits. These bills taken together would mean a significant step forward for solar in Oregon, leading to environmental and economic benefits. So, on behalf of our members, I would ask the board to publicly endorse these bills, either by individually signing the letters that I have left over there or by passing a resolution calling on Lettersaders Act. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jonathan Brandt is next, followed by Zach Mulholland.
Again, I'm Jonathan Brandt at 57 West 20th in Eugene. I want to express my great appreciation for you all moving along with the Quiet Zone. Personally, I'm interrupted in my sleep almost nightly because of the trains. I don't know if you know, there's about 26 trains a day. They have to blow their horn four times at each of 10 crossings. That's about 1,000 blasts a day at almost 100 decibels. And if that was a student party, they'd be shutting it down. So, I really appreciate you moving forward with that. It is a public health issue. I want to make sure that you're keeping that in mind, as well as economic development tourism. As far as public health is concerned, there are people all over town whose sleep is disrupted and also their productivity during the work hours. Hospitality industry is greatly affected by this. As I believe you heard earlier, Inn at the Fifth has triple-pane windows, and they still get complaints about the rain, railroad noise. And of course, the Hilton Downtown, many other hospitality businesses along Franklin are affected. Another big thing, opportunity for the Quiet Zone to help with is economic development downtown. As you know, there's a couple of big developments that are kind of in the offing waiting to see if a Quiet Zone can be created that would allow them to create the kind of housing that's desired downtown. But we're not going to get that kind of housing until we have a more quiet environment for that. It was also mentioned, talked about buildings close to the tracks. They may be inconvenienced in some ways by a Quiet Zone, but they might be helped also. And I know, it was mentioned about the Koki Building, and I talked to Pete Gribskoff about that a while back, and he actually is interested in putting some other kinds of businesses and condos in that building, and he was thinking he might have to spend a lot of money to soundproof it. So, you might look at that angle, too, and how it can help businesses have to not spend money retrofitting their buildings. One thing I'd like to encourage you to do is to consider a task force for the Quiet Zone. That'd be one way to involve members of the community, all the stakeholders, so they get a say, including affected businesses, neighborhood leaders, different groups like E-Web, and other areas of the community, so that there can be a consensus built around this. And that group can work, looking at the different strategies and funding options as well. In closing, I'd like to say that over 600 communities have created Quiet Zone, so it's very doable, and I think it's about time that Eugene joined that list. And it's one of those rare issues where there's wide community benefit and not really a great deal of sacrifice. So, thank you very much.
Zach Mulholland is next, followed by David Caruso.
Thank you for having me. I recently moved to Councilor Brown's district. I've lived in probably half the councilors' districts over the years. So, my name is Zach Mulholland. I'm a volunteer at 350 Eugene. I'm here to talk to you about the carbon pricing resolution that you should be seeing shortly. Just wanted to reiterate what Megan said, that we would very much like the council to pass as quickly as possible the carbon pricing resolution. We're a little over a month into a five-month legislative session, and we would love to get the voice of Eugeneites as represented by the councilors heard in the state legislature supporting this issue. There's some really great bills moving through the legislature right now, including House Bill 3470, which our local chapter of 350 Eugene is getting behind. That's very similar to the local climate recovery ordinance that Eugene passed last summer, and that it would mandate the state reach its already, reach the emission reduction targets that it's already set, but would actually set those into statute and require the state meet those goals. So, very much appreciate the leadership that the Eugene City Council has shown on climate issues in the past. We've had over 700 Eugene residents sign a statement of support for carbon pricing. We'd very much appreciate it if the city council would quickly move to pass that resolution and get your voice heard in the legislature this session. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Last up is David Caruso.
I am David Caruso. I live on Lassiter Street in Ward 8. I think I just recently moved there. I want to thank the council for moving forward with the Quiet Zone issue today. I was going to try to reiterate the things that I learned from doing the petition, which I'm pretty sure you're all aware of. I instigated the petition last October, and what I found was, in a few weeks, without barely any effort on my part, hundreds of people signed the petition, wrote comments, and it was very clear to me that people feel very strongly about this. It seems that, in the past, the people's opinions wasn't necessarily polled or otherwise known necessarily. And by doing the petition, I really realized that, yeah, people have been concerned about this, and they've been dealing with it for years, and I'm sure that they will be greatly relieved when there is a Quiet Zone. I happen to live 2.4 miles from the nearest point of the track, and I get woken up at night by it. Different weather conditions can result in sound carrying, and it goes right through my window whether they're closed or not. So, this is an issue that impacts all of Eugene. People's sleep is disrupted, children can't sleep, businesses are affected, people are feeling low-level stress around this. People deal with it in different ways, but I think that everyone's been affected one way or the other. And it's hard to say what will happen to Eugene once the Quiet Zone is implemented, how Eugene might kind of subtly change, but I can almost guarantee that the change is going to be very positive. And I just want to thank the council for moving forward today and for your support, and I'm looking forward to quiet nights and restful sleep. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you all for coming. Very important topics, a whole lot of them. Appreciate your voices here tonight, today. I'm going to look to council, see if there's any comments. Councilor Zelenka?
Yeah, I wanted to thank all the people for Washburn Park neighborhood who came out this evening. And I went to a scoping meeting at Lori's house a couple of months ago, and we came up with numerous really good ideas, but I think the biggest thing that came out of that for the council, and one of the reasons I encourage folks to come tonight, was that the partnership created was between the city, the neighbors, and the U of O, including our Parks Department and the Police Department, both of which had neighborhood representatives there, and the U of O had people there, and of course, the neighbors were all there. But creating that kind of partnership, I think, is the precedence that's really important here. That can be a really good example about how we can solve problems in the future, especially around our parks. And I think this is after, so right today, and as far as we can see forward unless we change the rules, it is not legal to smoke anything in a park. Even after July 1st, when pot becomes legal, it will still be a violation of city code to smoke in the parks, as it is right now. And I think this problem's going to actually get bigger because the U of O, because they receive federal grants, it's illegal, and a grounds for disciplinary action may be expulsion for smoking pot anywhere on campus, even though the state law will have changed. So, that forces folks out into the neighborhoods, and the nearest park happens to be Washburn Park. That's the problem. I think the ask that they came, the crime prevention through environmental design is a great next step in this partnership, and helping them get there is a great, would be a great thing for the City of Eugene to do. As far as Friends of Trees thinks are coming out, I also understand that Friends of Trees planted about 50 trees on the new MX route. They're going to be planting about 700 trees, I think, which is more than, 300 or 400 more than they're there now in the redo of that route. As the former president of the Solar Energy Association of Oregon, I think more solar's great, so I hope we support those pieces of legislation. And then finally, I will indeed be putting forth a crime or pricing resolution this week to the council for action after our spring break.
Before I turn to Councilor Clark, I did want to say we actually have a staff member who is, has great expertise in environmental analysis, and that would be Todd. Your manager?
Right, and we've actually had our, a crime specialist, crime prevention specialist actually has arranged for a CPTED or Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design Assessment at Washburn Park already, and so we're moving forward with that.
That's good to hear.
Great.
All right, so, Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. One, and I appreciate everybody coming tonight and speaking. I think that's a good thing, that Washburn, the neighbors around Washburn Park have that opportunity. I'd like to say that Tom from Catholic Community Services, who was here earlier, mentioned he lived on Bond Lane. I didn't know that, as a matter of fact, which is in Ward 5. About four or five, well, more like six frankly, residents of Bond Lane have called me in the last year for the exact same situation that happens on Bond Lane Park. And as long as we're at the effort, I would like to request that on their behalf as well, as they have the exact same issue. One of the neighbors that lives across the street, her husband is an OB-GYN, and he leaves in the middle of the night to go deliver babies, and there've been times when parties last till 3:00 in the morning, and this young lady that talked to me is there alone with her kids and scared, and people throw stuff at their house when they complain, and they've had several confrontations. So, I'd like to request they have that same opportunity as well. The other issue was with what John brought up, and I know, I have long experience sitting up here and asking a specific legal question, and I'm pretty sure I know that the answer is, "We'll get back to you later on." I'm pretty sure. But I want to pose it anyway. I thought what he mentioned was interesting, and I'd just seen some of that information. I'll look forward to seeing it more. My understanding is that when the Boundary Commission expired, we became the authority on which those applications were decided. Do I have that right?
That's correct. The legislature abolished the Lane County Boundary Commission about five years ago. The legislature abolished the Lane County Boundary Commission about five years ago.
And they empowered the city of Eugene, right?
That's correct. We... the Lane County Boundary Commission was actually the last one in the state, and we're just like everybody else.
I thought his point was interesting, too, in that if somebody has the power to do... to make a decision like that, they should be elected, in my opinion, much like we are, but the boundary commission members were appointed and had the ability to make such a decision, rather like the LTD Board of Directors who have condemnation powers as appointed members, which I'm not sure is a... well, I know it's not a good idea. I wonder on what basis we, as a council, have the authority to make a decision based on one person's application of whether or not to annex a street. I'm going to want to know kind of specifically on that, when you have the chance to respond.
I'll get back to you on that.
Thank you. Thought you might.
Before we move on, I wanted to answer the question that we were asked about the man who came up and asked the question, is homelessness a crime in Eugene? And no, it is not a crime to be homeless in Eugene. So next up is a public hearing in action. This is on the 2016 through 2021 capital improvement program. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The capital improvement program is a planning document that forecasts the city's capital needs over a six-year period, based on various city-adopted long-range plans, goals, and policies. The FY 2016 through FY 21... 2021 CIP totals approximately $491 million, of which $171 million is funded and $319 million is unfunded. This public hearing is an opportunity for members of the public and other stakeholders to provide their input on the capital projects included in the CIP.
Thank you, city manager. I'm going to open the public hearing. And those wishing to speak during the public hearing must submit a completed request to speak form to the information desk prior to the beginning of the hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the podium. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. And we have eight people signed up to speak. First up is Diane Boltish-Silberman, followed by Janice Howard.
Thank you. My name is Diane Boltish-Silberman, and my address is 2555 Central Boulevard, and I am within Councilman Zelenka's ward. I've lived in Eugene for nine years, and I've been involved with animal rescue and welfare for over 30 years. Five of those years were as president, hands-on president of an animal shelter in small-town Iowa, where we built a state-of-the-art shelter from nothing. We started with absolutely nothing. I'm on the board of Stop Pet Overpopulation Today, and I'm a dog walker and dog behavior modification volunteer at First Avenue Shelter. I strongly encourage Eugene, Springfield, and Lane County to seriously begin the process of planning and building a humane, comfortable, for both people and animals, and welcoming shelter. The current is none of those. It is crowded. There is no space for prospective adopters to discuss dogs with staff or to complete an adoption application other than outside, which is totally unreasonable in bad weather, or in a crowded hallway. In that hallway, it's extremely noisy, with dogs barking, staff, volunteers, and other adopters squeezing past, and dogs being taken outside right next to adopters and visitors, many of whom have small children. This is not comfortable, welcoming, or safe. The 1970s shelter study recommended that the number of dog kennels be increased from 30 to 60. We are still at 30 kennels, which is not even close to being enough, especially in bad weather. And often, the dogs have to be kennelled outside and live in uninsulated dog houses. The inside dog kennels are too small, tremendously increased stress as dogs face each other across a walkway, and are made of material that only increases the noise level. It's not conducive to adoptions when people have to walk through the kennels with their hands over their ears because they can't stand the noise. And if we have problems with it, just think of what it does to our rescued dogs, who have far better hearing and cannot escape the noise and stress. The outside play yards need higher fences, as some of our more athletic dogs can climb over them, creating a very unsafe environment for a dog and its handler that may be in the adjoining yard. There are many other issues, but most of all, the current shelter is outdated, unpleasant, and inhumane for our community animals that end up there. We need to provide a safe place for the scared, and often abandoned, abused, and sick animals that we are lawfully and ethically required to care for. Many of our animals go back to their owners, but many stay at the shelter for much longer time periods. It's our responsibility to provide them with the best care possible, and to provide the staff, volunteers, and adopters with a safe, healthy environment in a new facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Janice Howard is next, followed by Sue Ann Scholler.
My name is Janice Howard. I live just outside the city limits in the county in Ward 5. My professional background is in human services, but I'm speaking to you tonight as a longtime volunteer dog walker and volunteer trainer at the First Avenue Shelter, which serves at the animal control facility for the cities of Eugene, Springfield, and unincorporated Lane County. My comments will address the inadequacies of the physical facility and in no way reflect on Green Hill Humane Society, who manages the day-to-day operations. A group of 11 dedicated volunteers recently submitted a letter to the Eugene Budget Committee to respectfully request consideration of funding to build a new public animal shelter. The current shelter, as you've heard, is too small and crowded, making for a very stressful environment for dogs and cats, who are already likely experiencing fear, loneliness, and abandonment. There are only 30 indoor dog kennels. They face each other in two rows of 15, and they mostly stay full. In winter time, there's the added stressor of keeping dogs warm due to the cold drafts coming in through the metal doors separating the front from the back kennels. These doors are opened, obviously, many times a day to let the dogs out for walks or exercise breaks. The dog beds next to these doors... the dogs sleep in the beds next to the doors due to the confined space of their front kennels. The radiant heat rises to the high ceiling while dogs are sleeping on beds raised just inches above the cold concrete floor. There are a number of safety issues in getting a dog out of its kennel and walking past all of the other dogs as they're barking loudly. A single narrow hallway leading out of the building is used by staff, volunteers with and without dogs, as well as by members of the public, who are coming in to view our animals. Once outside the shelter, we must also pass the parking lot, where clients are bringing their cats and dogs, and for appointments at the spay and neuter clinic. Sometimes the dogs are not on leashes, and they jump out of the car and may quickly approach our walkers and our dogs, making for a potentially risky situation for dogs and humans alike. Staff and volunteers have implemented a wonderful positive behavior modification program for the dogs in order to enrich adoptable behaviors. We teach them to sit quietly in their kennel when a person approaches. They learn not to jump up on people in excitement, and learn how to walk appropriately on a leash. These enrichment activities reduce kennel stress and make it more likely that these dogs will have a shorter stay in the shelter while waiting for their forever home. The important work... this important work can be extremely challenging to perform in a noisy shelter. In addition, as you've heard, potential adopters do not even have a quiet indoor space that is heated in order to visit with the dog or to have a conversation with staff. These interactions must occur in an outdoor exercise yard or in a noisy hallway. We believe that a modern shelter with a progressive design can provide the quiet environment necessary to reduce kennel stress, save lives, and enhance adoptability while these animals are waiting to find their forever homes. Thank you for this opportunity.
Next up is Sue Ann Scholler, followed by Misha English. And it seems to me like if you get... the more you get the mic in front of where your mouth is, the better we can hear you. And if it's too high, lower it.
How's that?
Yeah.
Okay. My name's Sue Ann Scholler, and I live at 2149 South Bertelson. I think that's Ward 8. I'm here also to talk about the infrastructure problems at First Avenue. I haven't been volunteering them as long as they're... as long as some of these other folks. It's been about two and a half, three years. But some of the issues... I've heard, especially Diane talking about the old radiant heater. It doesn't really bring any heat down. It unfortunately has a draft that pulls that heat away. The dogs are often sitting in like 30 to 40-degree temperatures up in the front of their kennels. If you bend down there to help them with blankets, it's extremely cold. There's also the problem with the kennel sizes being too small, especially if you have a large dog, and we go in and we try and harness these dogs. If they jump, you are in a very restricted area, and it is quite scary as a volunteer to try and get those dogs safely harnessed and out the door. There were days in August that were 100 degrees plus. The kennel was so overcrowded, they had a chicken coop that had been changed into a kennel with another kennel placed before it. They had blankets that they were trying to keep wet and cold that they could hang up, and they would dry within about a half an hour. The staff there tries extremely hard to give these animals a good experience, but that kennel is just antiquated and cold, and just brutal, really, to go and volunteer and see these animals suffer. Everybody does what they can to help them, but it really, really needs to be updated. I guess I'll just touch then also on where we take people to meet their dogs, the potential adopters. This has been touched on as well. But this is where we take the dogs to go, sometimes to have playdates, but most of the time, they go to potty. So when you bring in an adopter, one, the smell isn't very good, and the dogs are busy looking and sniffing and not paying attention to the adopters or the handlers, and it just makes it very difficult, and not a place that I would really look forward to going and meeting a prospective pet. So anything you can do to improve this center or do a new one? That would be great. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Misha English is next, followed by Gail Kiefer-Cotes.
Thank you, council. My name is Misha English, and I live on Bailey Hill Road in South Eugene. I've been a resident for Eugene, Lane County, for nearly 30 years. I volunteered at the First Avenue Shelter for several years with over 700 hours of service and counting. And I also volunteer pretty much seven days a week for SPOT Spay and Neuter Voucher Program, working the front end of the overpopulation problem. We're here tonight as a part of a grassroots effort to get a new public shelter building. We recently submitted a letter to the Eugene Budget Committee during the CIP process. We understand that the shelter is on the multi-year financial plan at this time as unfunded. As everyone has indicated, we need a new shelter, and I'm pretty sure that most people in the community that have been there recognize that that's the case. It's not a question of whether we need a new shelter, it's how we get a new shelter. It's come to my attention very recently that a proposal is being seriously considered by the contracting parties. A proposal whereby the First Avenue Shelter would be merged with the Green Hill Shelter into a new shelter building built on Green Hill's private land. I believe this plan would be ill-advised. First, I would have concerns with what value taxpayers would get for their money. Presumably, a plan like this would require a new contract that provided public monies in excess of the current contract price in order to offset Green Hill's capital expenditures. How would that work? Taxpayers wouldn't get ownership of the building since it's ceded on private land, so it wouldn't be a capital expenditure line item. So would taxpayers be asked to pad the current contract with extra administrative monies to offset the cost of a new building? How would the county and municipalities maintain a favorable bargaining position in contract negotiation once everything has been moved onto Green Hill private land? Would we be hostage to accelerating contract prices? In theory, there would be an escape or termination clause between the private and public entities, but how feasible would government extrication from it be, really? Where would the animals go? Wouldn't we have already given up the Lane County Animal Services building? The public needs to retain oversight over a government function that our community cares very deeply about. The option of a public shelter needs to be fully vetted, and the process should be transparent. It is incumbent upon the county and cities to do what is right by the animals and by the taxpayers by coming together to make a plan to build a new public community shelter that we can all be proud of. Thank you.
You're Gail, right? Is that...
Misha.
Misha. Okay. I was... I thought I heard differently. Okay, Gail is next. Gail Kiefer-Cotes is next, followed by Robin Broadbent.
My name is Gail Kiefer. I live at 3665 Marshall, over in West Eugene. I'm sure everybody here a few weeks ago heard the story about Hope, the dog that I rescued from the starvation and dehydration that she was having at the time. My concerns are that when I took her to the shelter that is being publicly funded by all of our taxpayer monies, I got told they couldn't do anything for me to help her. I find that appalling, for that to have happened when the condition was as bad as she was. I then went to my own personal vet, got told the same thing, ended up going to Tamara Barnes from Lane County No Kill, and asked for her help because nobody else in this town would help me. It's appalling that these animals in this county, this city, this community should have to suffer this way. Having an animal control officer to go out there five times and not see the dog, that doesn't concern anybody, it does me. Animals have feelings, they have hearts, just like everybody else. They deserve to be treated more than yesterday's garbage. And that's how Hope was treated by the animal control officers. When I called EPD to have a dispatch come out, I explained to the dispatcher exactly why I did what I did, why I was at the animal shelter, and when I got told, "Well, at the time of the day, he may or may not get to you." The dog was dying. That's uncalled for. This was an emergency situation, and animal control failed it. I'm sorry, but it's completely just uncalled for that it happened. The shelter should have done something. My vet should have done something. And then in the end, she gets taken over to the emergency vet, and they see her, and they are like, "Oh, well, she's doing just fine." Yeah, she did fine, under Tamara's care for three days of food, subcu fluids, and everything else. It took her three days to have a bowel movement. This isn't a dog that was at the end of life like everybody says it was. This was a dog that was failed by the community, by the animal control, by her owners, and I'm the one that stepped up, along with the other people in the community that stood behind me. I paid the vet bill to have her seen because that was her right to have that. And the animals in this community are not getting that from the animal control that we have right now, or the animal shelters, the way that they're being run. I hope and pray that nobody ever has to go through that as a person with their own families, and then be put out in a yard to die. Thank you.
Next is Robin Broadbent, followed by Rhonda Giadalia.
Robin Broadbent, South 68th Place, Springfield. Just two quick questions, concerns. What can you do to stop Green Hill First Avenue Animal Shelter from... while they're under contract with the county and the city? What can you do to stop them from breaking the city and county contract rules continuously and hiding it, and firing volunteers and employees? Secondly, how can the taxpaying public get them, Green Hill, First Avenue, to release the public records to the public? This has already gone to the DA now. They're wasting our money, and I really would like for you to research it, and I mean, you know it's there. Please do something. I beg you. Thank you.
Rhonda Giadalia, next, followed by Scott Bartlett.
I'm Rhonda Giadalia. I live in West Eugene, off of Barger. So I have kind of a story regarding the Hope situation, and I'm just going to read what I wrote. A woman who has been dedicated to saving animals tried to save a beautiful dog that she named Hope. She observed the dog through an open-viewed fence in the conditions that... She observed the dog through an open viewed fence in the conditions that the dog had been neglected, abandoned, and almost dead. This horrific woman tried to get a hold of the owners. To no avail, she contacted animal control to help this poor soul. Returning to the residence the next day, she found the dog still abandoned in the backyard without food nor water. This woman clearly could see that the dog's condition was way more severe than she had even thought. She rushed the dog after apparently calling several times to get help regarding the issue. She personally had retrieved the animal from the residence and rushed the dog to first animal shelter for treatment, where they did refuse treatment. So this determined woman took the animal to Four Corners Veterinary Clinic, where they did determine the dog's condition was due to severe and long-term neglect. This woman was nursing Hope back to health with subQ fluids, which is where you have to put into their body, and feeding every three hours. Hope was on her way to a better health and recovery when she was removed abruptly from the constant living care she was receiving and returned to her abusive owners. That day, she was put to death by her owners. We feel that the owners did it to avoid any type of prosecution in this matter, but that's just hearsay. It is time we think about the lives that are threatened of those who have suffered greatly at the hands of their keepers, of those who are neglected, brutalized, trapped in inhumane life. We demand that the animals will have the right to a life without abuse, neglect, and we demand protection that will be preserved with laws so that people will be accountable for the suffering they inflict on others. We need justice for the ones who cannot stand before a committee. We speak for the beings who are victims of people's inability to understand that animals have feelings. Like us, they play, they get hungry, they thirst, they get cold, hungry, and definitely feel pain. But above all this, they..."
Thank you, sir. Last up, Scott Bartlett.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Administrator Ruiz. My name is Scott Bartlett, 1445 East 21st Avenue, in Councilor Zelenka's district. In 1978, in this building, the elected officials put an end to what had been happening for decades. At that time, the Lane County sheriffs had jurisdiction over animal control and had contracted with Green Hill. Every year, 20,000-plus animals were killed in decompression chambers. That was a symptom, a reflection of lack of this spay and neuter that's ensued for the last 37 years. The people put together the funding for the tri-agency animal shelter. At that time, it was an optimistic and good shelter. The city and the county, when Springfield was unable to keep partnership, divided the roles. The city maintained and took control of the spay and neuter clinic, which today sterilizes between 3,000 and 4,000 animals a year and is invaluable to this community. Lane County took over the sheltering. The city and county had an excellent partnership. I was the chairman of the Lane County Budget Committee, member for 17 years, and was a member and then the chair of the task force, the Blue Ribbon Task Force, that was the city, all sorts of stakeholders that came participated. That was in 2003. A year later, the city followed suit with the county and did the rabies vaccination mandate, which has increased license revenues dramatically. But here we are again, 38 years later, and we do have, and we are seeing the symptoms of it here with these marvelous people I've just been observing, who are doing the real good work. We need to have a public shelter. I am a donor to Green Hill. I support Green Hill. If Green Hill didn't exist, we'd be so much the poorer. But there's a difference in missions. The public shelter has a law enforcement component as well. It is far more dangerous. I have seen, you know, the constituents that come in with sometimes dangerous dogs are different than the people who just surrender nice dogs to Green Hill for adoption, or the 30 dogs that are routinely imported from California to Green Hill. They're different functions. They can coexist. There can be colocations. And two years ago, three years ago, the County Board of Commissioners was seriously thinking of a new shelter on the 10 or 12 acres between Martin Luther King and I-105, just adjacent to the mental health building. That land still exists. I am told just today that there would be a willingness on the majority of the board to collaborate with the city and perhaps with Green Hill to construct one shelter or have Green Hill have a co-located shelter. This cooperation should exist. We need a public shelter, a public function, and we can use, of course, the cooperation of Green Hill. If you want Green Hill to manage it, so much the better. But now is the time for your leadership. Please give it.
Thank you. I'm going to close the hearing and thank everyone for taking the time to come and speak to us. Appreciate it very much. And Councilor Clark, you had something you wanted to say?
Thank you, Mayor. I just appreciate Mr. Barth's statement there at the end. It's interesting. While listening to everybody else, I was going to say something really similar to that. I've spoken with three of the commissioners about that particular chunk of dirt over there across from Watson. I was talking with Commissioner Stewart about it just a couple of days ago, as a matter of fact. And I know that, I believe that, there's probably a willingness on the part of the county commissioners to consider that as a use for that particular land. But I know their budget reasonably well, as I'm sure you do too, that that's a very difficult, difficult job to make that happen. That's going to be a community-wide effort to raise necessary capital to do that. The city can't afford to do that on their own, but I bet there'd be a willingness to participate in the process somehow. I don't know what that looks like best, but I just want to say I appreciate the idea. I've been talking about it with folks, too, and I think it would be a worthwhile idea, and I'd be interested in pursuing it, so.
Your comments? So does any councilor object to taking action tonight? Okay, so I'm going to ask Councilor Polling to put the motion on the table.
I move to adopt FY 2016-2021 Capital Improvement Program as recommended by the Budget Committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. None in opposition. It passes. Thank you all very much. Thank you. We're on to the next item for this evening. An ordinance providing for withdrawal of annexed properties. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council is scheduled to take action on an ordinance to withdraw annexed properties from special districts. These withdrawals come before the council on an annual basis, and this year, the batch contains six annexations approved by the city council in 2014. Some state statutes provide that any properties to be withdrawn must be approved by March 31st of 2015. Otherwise, these properties will remain on the tax rolls of special service districts for an additional year. On February 17th, the city council held a public hearing on this matter. No testimony was submitted. So staff recommends adoption of the attached ordinance approving the proposed withdrawals.
Thank you, City Manager. Council President, you want for the motion out on the table?
I move to adopt Council Bill 5138, an ordinance providing for withdrawal of annexed properties from the Santa Clara Fire District, the Santa Clara Water District, Lane Rural Fire Protection District, the Willackensy Rural Fire Protection District, and the Zumwalt Rural Fire Protection District.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none. I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. And none in opposition. It passes. The next item on our agenda is a committee reports. There's nothing on the Police Commission tonight. There is no Lane Metro Partnership. It is SWEDCO.
Little report on that. That'd be a short report, then?
Yeah, it'd be a very short report. Anything on the Lane Workforce Partnership? I know Councilor Taylor's not here.
That would be me now.
Okay.
Yeah, I've attended a couple of meetings, executive committee meeting and a board meeting so far. The Lane Workforce Partnership is currently undergoing a restructuring because of the changes in the Workforce Investment Acts and the state and national rules and regulations covering them. So it's, it used to be that the Workforce Partnership was under the county governance. They are no longer. They are now a separate entity. They still receive their funding from the Workforce Investment Acts, various other places. So the meetings pretty much have been about that restructuring that's going to be occurring. As that happens, I'll bring back more information on that.
Do you have anything on your EMX?
We had a meeting on the EMX LTD Steering Committee meeting last week, and a lot of it was just a kind of going over some of the projects that the EMX is going through. They covered some of the information on the West Eugene extension. They covered some of the outreach that's been done, where we are in the project, and what's coming up next. But as far as anything other than that, you know, some high-level views of what's going on with the other routes, and also trying to, we're looking at possibly, looking at a more holistic approach to the EMX system as opposed to one route at a time. So that's a discussion that we're just getting started on.
So the next thing on here is UMPAC, and we actually don't have a member on UMPAC, so that one doesn't need to be on our list either. And the last one is the Mackenzie Watershed Council. Anything on that?
No, I don't really have anything to report from that.
So before we close the meeting for this evening, you've each received a copy, I believe, of the letter that I received from the Lane County Poverty and Homelessness Board, and it was sent to Commissioner Bosovich and Mayor Lundberg and me. And I sent something in an email about it to you all also. And basically, it's asking us to address the issue of criminalization of homelessness. And I have to give them a response. So they would like us to have a work session to deal with that, and in order for that to happen, somebody would have to put a poll out and do the polling to cause a work session to happen. So I wanted to bring this to your attention and see if anybody wants to, you don't have to tell me now, but you can just do it if you choose to do it, but that's, we need to have some kind of response. You want to say something, George?
Yes, Mayor. I had thought that, or maybe you just, maybe it was aspirational and actually didn't do it, but I thought that Councilor Evans said we brought this up.
And we had work sessions.
And nobody responded.
Yeah, that's right. You didn't get enough votes.
No, we didn't get enough to get it. That's why I'm bringing it back home.
That's right.
So just so you know.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. All right, so if you want to, I'd be happy to discuss that with anybody if you'd like to. The only other, I think I put it else. I had a, just wanted to bring to your attention, you had in your packet, the hate and bias report for 2014, and just wanted, I know it's late, but I did want to say that what they found was there was pretty low numbers with the non-criminal hate incidents, but an increase in criminal cases involving hate and bias activity. African-Americans were particularly targeted, and reports on activity based on sexual orientation are higher than the previous years. So both of those issues, and homelessness is not a protected class, but incidents were reported and flagged specifically targeting people because they were unhoused. So we have, you will see in the report, there were a total of 22 non-criminal reports in that year, and there were criminal reports, there were 47, with 16 reports on racial incidents, 13 on sexual orientation, 6 on national origin, and 3 on homelessness. So I hope you will take a look at that because that sort of drives the direction that we need to be paying attention. I just wanted to bring it forward for people to be aware of that. Okay? All right, with that, that's the end of business for this evening. Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's the statement.